...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, for a cold chilly morning.
Good morning.
Are you leaving there?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Good evening.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
The motion is a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Motion to approve the minutes.
The motion to move for the January eighth, is there any-
Second.
Second?
Second, aye.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Ben, you got any general concerns?
I don't really-
You're being here the only one here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm just teasing ya.
All I've got is just the, the one item on the agenda, Prairie Energy.
Well, I'll take ya, I've just given you a bad time, there's no general-
No, general concern.
So, put a check by that and we'll talk to Ben, come on up.
Humboldt's still two hours-
Two hours late, I heard.
Cause my wife just called me, Fort Dodge is canceled now.
They've canceled, Fort Dodge has canceled.
I think some of the northern schools are canceling, too.
Well, the way the wind's blowing.
Is it the wind chill, you think?
Uh, I'm assuming so because-
Must be.
The roads that I drove this morning.
Yeah, the roads are good. Visibility's pretty decent, unless you're old and got bad eyes.
I think they're-
Thank you. My visibility's pretty bad on a good day, it's a screw.
Well, it's 25 below wind chill.
It's pretty rough, but I think it is worse further north. I bet you gal go out.
I know we're a little bit hotter than the hatch for our trucks, just because some of them showing up at the tanks.
I know the first graders can't get anywhere at once, but the concern I used to have calling school late, drive a roads, you can't get there soon enough, and you come up the corner of the school bus, you turn too soon, you go in a ditch.
Yeah.
That's what they're concerned about.
Okay.
And you can't get them all covered, but-
Yeah.
That's what happens, the school buses, they have to break the path, and even though it's that deep, you can't see the road.
Right.
Okay, Ben, you're up. Come on up.
All I got this morning is, uh, uh, application to work in the right-of-way for Prairie Energy. Uh, they're re-spanning some bolts, that over on Texas Avenue would be southwest toward, uh, it's about two and a half miles from the county line north.
Come by the bridge?
Uh, there's a pulpit on Texas and, uh, excuse me, 60th. Yeah, it's just north of that to the acreage on the west side, I'm drawing a blank on the, on the person. But they're, yeah, they're re-spanning, uh, about two and a half miles. I talked to the guy, he said they're doing some more work down in Webster County, so this is kinda just part of that.
Okay. Would we approve the work in the right-of-way for Prairie Energy on Texas Avenue?
We got a motion from Carl.
Second, aye.
Second, from Dave, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Pretty simple life, isn't it?
Yeah, as I say, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty simple agenda today.
I, uh, the other day, what was it, Thursday? Whenever the weather was, last time it was snowing, I stopped through and vis- sat and visited with Ben for quite some time. Um, how are you progressing on your rock? I've seen some of the guys, some of the foremen were bringing in some of your tickets for this rock you've been hauling. Is Thor done?
Thor's done, uh, they started hauling to boat last Monday, I think boat should be about done now. Um, I don't have a, a load count for what we haul to boat yet, but I know, uh, we had crews out cutting trees for the Monday, Tuesday, and I think the half-day Wednesday, and then Wednesday after lunch, they started putting snow and putting on for the snow that we ended up getting on Thursday. So, we did have crews out cutting trees, um, I know Humboldt and, and Hardy, basically, they're running two man crews with chainsaws and, and, uh, stone killer, so.
Well, I guess my question, and I asked Ben was, you know, we'd talked before, um, I got, I found my sheet from last year of the, the rock that, uh, was hauled to the different places, and I guess we're, I'm still under the belief that whether we're sometime we get in the bind and we don't get it all hauled, if we should try sometime to contract some of that out, or if we just stick with our guys doing it, running our trucks up and down the road, we save money doing it. I don't have a clue, what's your guys' thought? And I guess that was what I, we visited about. It's good when we don't have, but if you have three to four days of snow, or they're pushing snow, you know, every morning, um, all of a sudden we don't get those days where we can haul to, and three days out of the week, um, I guess that was my, I don't wanna get in a bind in the spring and then we're sitting at the quarry when-
Well, I think you-
-there's nobody else in that country hauling rock.
Actually, explained it better than you think you did. It's if you run into, well, you said snow, or any other things, that needs to be done, it's immediate, then that's when you, probably particularly one of the times you need to look at, okay, let's contract this rock hauling. And/or if there's, and Ben said, you know, they're out, nice days, cutting trees, that's great, you know, good weather for it, uh, get out and get that done. I always thought, you know, if there's anything else to do, be it snow, trees, anything that you can do that should be done, then it probably is more cost-effective to get it transported there via contracting. So, I mean, you kinda look at it, uh, as a, you know, don't want it, bunch of guys standing around, well, I don't have something to do, you know, and I know they probably like to haul rock instead of cut trees out of a ditch, but be that as it may. If it's feasible, and you know, you wouldn't send them out on a day like today, and they gotta take care of the roads, but, you know, given the opportunities, and there should be flexibility in that, um, I think, you know, we, you said you dredged up from almost a year ago, information.
We got our, we got our last-
It's probably a matter of whatever trucking firm or firms that you would contact, you know, what's their flexibility in that? Because if you leave it at, well, we need it hauled if we need it hauled, and if we don't need it hauled, you know, and they might wanna more concrete, yeah, you know, amount, or closer to a concrete amount, say, okay, you want me to haul 300 tons, our company? Fine, but we kinda gotta know, we kinda have a parameter.
Well, with the one, we all know, the one over here, that they've been staying pretty steady with hauling ingredients for hog slats, because hog slats has been making slats through the winter, so they're doing the chips and the sand and whatnot hauling over there. Um, and I guess if you put it up, some of it out for bid and see if there was any interest at all, I mean, they, I would think that they would, but I don't wanna put our guys out past year either, I'm not trying to do that, but I guess I'd just like a comparison to see what our cost is, and those costs that we have, were given last year, were just to the pile. That isn't out onto the road, too.
But either way, we'd be paying the expense of it on the road.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, all, all, the only expense would be to haul it to the pile.
Right.
Um, I guess me, personally, I could get quotes from somebody like a John's Ag for what they would charge to haul from a quarry to, say, the stockpile by Livermore, uh, but I would probably use that as a, a last alternative come March, if we see that we don't have the piles all built, to incorporate them with our guys hauling, to try and get it done in time. Uh, otherwise, like I said, I, I could see where if we hired them now to haul to stockpile, and we get a bad enough winter that we aren't able to cut trees, but yet, a, a good enough winter that most everything's done, I could see where our guys wouldn't have anything to do in that early March area, because all of the stockpiles have been hauled to.
Okay.
But I have no problem with, with talking to the guys at John's Ag and getting a quote for, you know, uh, I don't know if it's cents per ton per mile, or what.
I don't know if they would give it. But, I don't know. Do you feel comfortable doing that? I mean, having-
I want, I would like to know that information, I guess.
Yeah, you can, and, but there again, you know, we're leaving it at is, you know-
The weather has so much to do with it.
It does, I mean, and it's, you wanna be fair, I mean, the key thing is, if you're contracting it out to haul it, I, it, I, I think if you consider that the, the secondary road guys are doing something else, and have something constructive to do, which, you know, they're getting, the weather does play a lot in that.
Yeah, the weather, that's the issue.
Play that, you just can't, you know, but if they are doing whatever else, I think it's probably extremely cost-effective. You know, if you contract somebody, you know, hire this person to do that person's job, and that person sits there and looks at ya-
Yeah.
-that's not much of a savings. So, it is, that's where I feel if, if they're freed up to do whatever, and there's gotta be something more than just cutting trees, although that's important, very important.
Well, I mean, this time of year, you're not gonna get anywhere to be out like digging-
You're not, it's gonna be tough to fix an intake, right?
Even, even cutting trees, you know, if you got three foot of-
Snow.
Snow in the ditch.
You're cutting them three foot tall.
You cut the trees as high as-
And then you're gonna go back and cut them again, I know it. But I mean, in all reasonable, weather-related, usually, but I say, if there's something they can do, I think it'd be extremely cost-effective.
Well, the other side of the coin was with the fall that we had, and the amount of work that you got done, as far as your driveways, your tile repairs, your, we got pretty much caught up on that, wasn't that what you told us?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we're pretty well caught up.
So, I mean, the list is pretty well caught up, and I guess that was the only thing that I thought was, well, you know, if you can save, and you're also saving on the wear and tear on our-
That's what I love.
That's the big thing, too.
To me, the, the big thing is the wear and tear on our trucks, cause they're expensive to replace.
So, I mean, it, even though we get a bid, doesn't mean that we're gonna do it.
Right.
I mean, I'm not saying that we're just gonna yank their chain, we're looking at-
At least then we have a number to-
We have, at least we have a number to say, oh, it's gonna cost us to do it.
Well, Ben, if you're gonna check, you know, when you get a chance, you know, it's probably fair that whoever you contact, trucking-wise, I mean, do they need a, you know, a bare minimum? Are they comfortable if you give them enough advance notice that it's, you know, I don't know what the amount, a lesser amount, but yeah, cause we see that things have happened, and you probably better get that pile there by spring, you know, just see what their flexibility is, cause you don't know, you know. Usually companies like, well, I'd like a big amount, and I'd like a set amount, and yeah, we'll get it done for ya. We're asking for a little flexibility with them.
Yeah.
Well, boat, we took 330, 3,346.1 ton last year, Livermore, 3,903 ton, Thor, 42, 82, Hardy, 34, 53, and for a total of 15,000, almost, almost 15,000. So, at least, you know, if they went and had those numbers, at least it would give us the ability to, and I guess I just thought, well, you never know how long winter's gonna last here, and, uh, if we get a situation where we could get one stockpile that, uh, they haul, we can do a comparison. If not, if our guys do it, I don't have a problem with it, at least give us numbers to see if we're within shooting range for the, for what it's costing us to do it.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll check on numbers with John's Ag and see what they usually charge per ton mile, and I'll, uh, quote them basically for like one pile.
Yeah.
You know, what it would cost to have them haul to, say, Livermore pile.
Yeah.
And compare that with what we, what we pay. Uh, like I said, my concern is if we do haul, or if we do contract haul, uh, it, it might end up where our guys are left with nothing to do on a decent enough day, where we're not moving the snow.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
But still, you know, a poor enough day where it's five below and-
Yeah.
-it's blowing like crazy.
Mm-hmm. I think we need to leave this to the engineer, because you can come to us with, your culture, I, part of these quotes of how many tons haul, oh, that means nothing to me, I don't think much to us.
Our guys haul between 13 and 13 and 15 tons.
You're the best judge, you know, what work has to be done, and do that comparison, what Bruce suggested, have that in the background, if it's gonna work for ya, do it. Otherwise, we'll take your advice, you come and say you're gonna do this, do that, I think that's what it should be. We can't measure who's gonna haul your gravel, I don't think.
Yeah, and I, I, like I said, I have no problem with, with getting a, a quote and comparison, I mean, we wanna make sure that we're in the ballpark, I mean, we don't have to be the cheapest, but-
Well, and it, the whole thing, bottom line.
Cost-effectiveness is what-
That is our-
But like you said earlier, I mean, if we're hiring them to haul rocks-
And you got a guy sitting there.
-and standing around, that's-
That's not causing, no. The only way that makes it truly cost-effective, and I mentioned it, is that they're doing something else.
Right.
Then, then I think whatever numbers you come up with, that will work, but yeah, I mean.
And you're the best judge for that, to know whether to pull the trigger.
The last couple of years, we've, uh, we've been, we've talked about it, and we've always said, well, if we get into a situation, and I just don't wanna end up in a situation where we need it hauled, and we've never talked to anybody, we've never considered doing it, so I guess as long as we consider, always-
In that aspect, then we wouldn't haul the stockpile, we'd just haul and serve directly on the road.
Yeah.
You'd eliminate building the stockpile and just haul directly from the road.
Okay.
Good point.
Well, are we, we're gonna do all these other things before we have our work session, cause we don't have a whole lot of-
This won't take too long.
Yeah. Are you starting at the top, Peggy, with the-
Sure.
Appoint a representative, an alternative to Region Five Transportation Advisory Committee?
Shirley Hubble, old from Midas, sent a letter, said she needed a representative. Um, I wrote back to her and said it used to be Paul, does it have to be an engineer? And she said, no, it doesn't have to, it's just most counties do appoint an engineer, so, choice is up to you. And I don't believe we had an alternate before, but they asked for an alternate, so.
Do you know what they asked for, Ben? What's all involved in that?
Sorry?
The Region Five Transportation Advisory Committee.
That's the committee?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know much about it, I think that's all through, um-
Midas.
Midas, with Shirley, Hubble, we've exchanged phone calls this past week, but we haven't actually been able to get ahold of each other, so.
I was on the advisory committee for a while, and, uh, there's some supervisors on there, I remember Paul was on that, they don't meet, the engineer doesn't meet with us all the time, maybe once or twice a year.
Yeah.
Is that the one that's down at ISAC?
No, that's in Fort Dodge, Midas.
One, what am, what's that one that I'm on, down in, down in?
That's one DOT site of stuff.
DOT.
Yeah, it's DOT stuff.
Well, how often does this, uh, advisory committee meet? Transportation Advisory Committee, does anybody know?
Once, twice a year.
As needed?
As needed?
Once, twice a year.
You're on that same committee, you're, you're on that committee now, aren't ya? Transportation Committee, yeah.
Yeah, I'm on transportation. I see, there's, I mean, he's-
Well, dumb question, would we be sending two then, if Dave's already there, or we'd be sending another one?
No.
No. You're on a different-
This is a different.
Which one are you on right now, Dave?
I'm on the Midas.
The Midas? But so Midas doesn't meet at the same time these folks do?
We all meet at the same time, but transportation's over there, and I'm over here planning, and finances is another room, and then we all get together and have a joint meeting. But, uh-
So, would you wanna consider putting Ben on it, being Paul served on it before, is that what?
By the time the discussion gets to be involved, financing, roads versus trails, and I think that probably the engineer would be the best representative for that.
Was that a motion, a form of a motion?
I'll make that a motion, and we appoint Ben to represent us on the committee, Region Five Transportation Advisory Committee.
I'll say.
Motion in a second, any other discussion?
Do we need an alternate on there, too?
Well, we've already got a motion going, so you might as well finish this, and then if you wanna make a separate motion for that, you can.
Any other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, sounds like Ben won by a landslide.
(laughing).
Now, do you wanna go with an alternate? Everybody looks down.
Well, the only thing is, I mean, that, we're, we, right now it's Ben, but then is this contingent upon what our engineer program looks like here in the future?
Yeah.
That's my only question.
Hold on, it has-
I'll, I'll sign up for the job, make it easy.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rick Peterson as the alternate to the Transportation Advisory Committee.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All those in favor of Rick? Say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick.
Just kidding.
I tell you what-
Just kidding, aye.
You can't do self-concussion and then jump the ship.
Changed my mind.
Okay, except in place on file, recorder's quarterly report, uh, ending 12/31/17, if there's a copy in your package. See your totals in county and state, you all right? Don't know that we can answer any questions, we can sure call Diane, though. Anybody has anything? Otherwise, that entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the recorder's quarterly report, placed on file.
Motion from Rick.
Second. Go ahead, Dave.
Eric.
Dave, I don't care.
Report each everyone you wanna take, Peggy.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Two sheets, three to sign on that one.
She collects a lot of keys, no kidding.
Fifteen thousand dollar one.
Okay, except in place on file, treasurer's semi annual report, as of 12/31/17. Should be in there also. That front and back. She's flunked that, that entertain a motion.
Would we approve the treasurer's report, file as semi annual report?
There's a motion from Carl.
Second.
Second from Dave, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign?
You have a stamp that says approved in your desk, that's what goes on, that's why.
Next one's a problem.
I know, it's a big problem.
But not this one?
Yep. Rick was supposed to pass it on to him.
You take the stamp?
The one that says approved on it?
Yes, I did.
He was waiting for you to ask for it.
I was gonna make you write that off.
Cover on there?
Yeah, just pull the last, he got it.
Yeah, it's off, it's like.
There you go.
Anywhere?
Yep, anywhere. I can put a beat for you if you just wanna send it.
Okay, except in place on file, auditor's quarterly report, ending 12/31/17.
This is a tough one.
I didn't see anything jump out on this one, so I'd make it a, a motion to approve the auditor's quarterly report for the quarter ending 12/31/2017.
We have a motion from Eric, any other discussion, or a second, excuse me?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Just get the stamp, too?
Nope, just signed right there. Some of us already have the signature lines, and, and, don't.
Eminent domain board.
Okay, how about appoint person for the eminent domain board?
Okay, last week, we had a list of names, um, that were given to us by some of the local realtors, and so it's up to you whether you wanna point all of them, or just some of them, or whatever you wanna do, so.
And this covered our requirement?
Yes, we're required to have seven, we had four, so if we put everybody on, we'll be over, but that's okay, you can be over, you just can't be short.
So, we have to have how many, Peggy?
Seven, seven in each one of the categories.
And this gives us how many then total, if we were to point everyone?
Nine.
Nine.
I like the idea of having a couple extra.
I do.
I'd make a motion to, uh, port the listed persons to the eminent domain board, as listed.
We have a motion to-
Second the motion.
In a second, to put the names that are on our list, all on the eminent domain board, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign? Think they all made it.
I'll give that to Bob and Martin Sherwood Kent, so you've got those names, too.
Zoning HIPAA, safety, environmental hazard, uh, waste update.
Um, I was hoping I would have some more information for you by today, Melody was gonna do some checking with the, I believe it's the guy in Fort Dodge that does both jobs, um, and I haven't heard anything yet, I haven't seen a job description yet, um, so I really don't have any information for you.
So, we'll just, we can table that until next week?
Yep, mm-hmm.
We want, since we don't have a whole lot of input in it?
I don't know, it's just, just discussion, cause it's just, uh-
Yeah, it's just discussion.
Update, so I guess we'll have to table our update till we can get updated.
We'll, uh, table that till next week, um, how about many reports?
Okay, I'll start out. Last Tuesday, in the morning, we met with a land developer out of Des Moines, and it was Board of Realtors, and we discussed possible developing some land for, uh, low-rent housing, low, low affordable housing. The land we're talking about's right out with your place, Bruce, right west of the, right east of the golf course on that bedrock stuff. Talking about developing some flo- lands out there, and there'll be more forthcoming on that, it's just temporary, that's the first guys we talked to, but there's a great need for housing in this community, as all communities, and we need something that people can, there might be some affordable housing, there might be some condos, there might be some apartments, but we need some more housing for some people somehow, that's one of the things they're looking at. So, we met in the morning from about eight o'clock till noon, discussing that idea. On Thursday, I was supposed to go to Des Moines, but I was fighting the flu bug, so I didn't go. We had, uh, advisory committee for the Iowa Technology Service Committee, I was supposed to chairman of that, and I called, uh, Melvin Hauser, and he ran it for me, I listened in online, I don't know what they did, I slept through it. It's just advisory committee, dealing with the technology for communication of mental health, information from the providers, to the hospitals, to the upstairs, these kinda things, and we're just advisory committee for the ISAC board, who has all the authority on it. So, just formalities, and we come up ideas, and they, uh, take it from there. I think that was the extent of my meetings, I will say right now, I announced to you guys, I do not plan to seek reelection, so we'll put the word out, let's see, well, I believe I saw in the favor of other counties, say you have to file between the 5th of March and 28th of March, so the word if anybody wants to run for this position, I will not seek reelection. Been fun, but it takes time for somebody else. That's the end of my report.
We appreciate all you do, Carl.
Yep. I don't have anything.
Uh, this past Monday on the 8th, I could have my monthly LEC meeting.
Yeah, I was at the LEC meeting on the 8th, uh, my Thursday meeting got canceled, um, that was, uh, IDDA, they got canceled, moved, moved a couple weeks, so that's all I had was LEC.
On the 10th, we had the mobile food pantry, uh, down Fairgrounds, um, the numbers were a little off from what we've been doing, uh, I don't know whether it was the weather, um, it was the night before, the storm, which really didn't show up like they were talking about.
That one didn't.
But we ended up, I think there were 74 families, um, 144, 145 individuals, uh, that came through, um, the door, were affected, um, and it just so happens that this is probably one of the best, uh, food, they brought a lot of food this time, and we had, our numbers were down, so it, it's a good thing for, the other side is, we take all the food that's left over, uh, up to our food pantry. left over, uh, up to our food pantry. They must have brought, I don't know, 10 or 12 great big boxes of apples, we had two pallets of potatoes.
Ooh, wow.
So, the starch was at a high level going out the door, anybody that liked potatoes was carrying two and three bags of potatoes, because we took, uh, a whole bunch up to the food pantry, so right now we have a huge amount of apples and potatoes up there, so hopefully this morning and, and tomorrow, I guess Wednesday, when they're open, they'll, uh, get rid of all those, but we are still in the process of trying to figure out what's going on up there, and we have a meeting on Wednesday here, so with the ministerial board, so hopefully we'll get some of those things figured out, but that was all we had for the, the week. Do you have anything else, Peggy?
No, I don't.
Well, we have a couple of work sessions that, uh, we have Ben, and, uh, Ben, we have Peggy, and we were also, I don't toss around anything more that we've learned on wind, other than winds blowing today.
I know.
We've seen it have that, so I guess if nothing else.
Did everybody get that email on, um, it was on the Senate legislative stuff coming up?
From, was that?
Uh, come from ISAC.
Did that mention, uh, Master Matrix business?
Yes.
Yes, I read through that, not word by word, but I did get it.
There's about five or six Senate files coming up, or House budget, or they're, they're working on, and all of them are to do with, uh, hog confinements, cattle confinements and stuff. It come on an email, and if you're for it, I suggest everybody read it and pass it on to the citizens of the county, and contact your people in Des Moines and get them to vote for it, because it puts control of these confinements back into the county's hands, the way I read all of them.
Okay. Well, good point, Dave, I got to see that out and look at it closely.
I read it through, and I was going to pass the word on a little bit to a couple of other citizens that's really concerned on it, but, uh, there's about five or six House files.
Yep.
And they're going to be voting on it.
Did it?
Bring it up on the floor.
When you read through that, did they mention send anything back to ISAC in general, or?
Send it, send it to your legislature.
Send it to the legislature, okay.
Well, the problem to have our legislator, some of the other counties have been doing this, and Mike Sexton's wife was a big haunch on this, and they're much, they're pro hogs all the way, so.
You're correct.
You talk to Mike Sexton, you talk to Sexton, you don't get anything, you have to talk to somebody outside of our reputation.
The guy that's introducing it was from, did that happen?
I said, uh.
Can't remember the county he was representing, but he, he was from another county, started with an A.
Apennines County?
I think that's where it was.
I don't remember.
Yeah, he's introducing, like, like I said, there's about six different ones, one of them's Master Matrix, one of them's where you spread, um, there was another about distances, um, setbacks and all that, so.
That was, caught my attention, and I'm going to re-read that, but I won't argue with Carl on Mike Sexton's point of view, but he is our representative, and I believe he needs to hear from the, like Dave said, not just necessarily supervisors, but citizens and.
Citizens and everybody, because it's, it's, it's coming up and it's going to put the, put it back in the supervisor's hands of, we can either deny it, or tell them, no, you can't put it there, you got to put it down street aways, or.
That's the way I read that.
That's the way I read it, is.
The way it should be.
And it goes, I mean, it's going to come from the state to get those changes made, so these are the folks that represent us at the State House, they need to hear.
Going into the House right now.
I agree with you 100% on that.
The other thing was that, um, EMA meeting that was tentatively for Tuesday night has been canceled, so if you were planning on going to that, cross that off.
That's just coming, where are we at here?
That was the 16th, file sent a message that said that they didn't have enough.
That was one, Pogie.
Was that, that one was canceled.
Yeah.
So, that's off the board, so, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion.
Second, Dave's motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, we're adjourned.